Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee for the 12th of October 2023. I call councillors' attendance and we have everyone here. Good morning, everyone. I have no apologies. So I'll move on to the acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. Do we have any declarations of interest in matters on the agenda? There are none? Thank you. Just to acknowledge, I think in our public gallery, we have some residents here, which is really great to see when we're discussing matters in their local community. So welcome aboard. Before we go into the business outstanding, I'd just like to put forward a motion that I saw that councils know last night, but I'd like to swap items three and four around. So the order of the day would be items one, two, four, three, then five. So I'm not sure if you've got that there? May I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any discussion? No? I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We'll go on to item one, which is the business outstanding. It's a response to the petition for setting up of an Islamic section in Ipswich Cemetery. And it's the recommendation that council officers continue to progress the establishment of an Islamic burial section at an Ipswich City Council managed cemetery. Does anyone have any questions of the relevant council officer on this matter? No? In that case, I'm happy to move that. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Johnic. I don't need to speak to her. If you wish to speak to councillor Johnic, I know you're very hands-on with this.
Um, no, I have nothing to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We'll move on to item two, which is the confirmation of minutes for the Growth Infrastructure Waste Committee, held on the 5th of September 2023. Does anyone have any errors, corrections, amendments? No, in that case, I move them. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Consulman. Put that to the vote. Those in favour? Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We'll now move on to item four, which is the, and it's quite a meeting matter, which is the proposed submission and housing supply statement on the draft South East Queensland Regional Plan 2023 update and draft SEQ infrastructure supplement. So may I ask for the relevant council officer to come to the lectern? I'll just ask with councils that, um, obviously it hasn't been moved and seconded, so we shouldn't be going into discussions for questions. If we wish to have a discussion while the council offices are there, we'll just move it and second it.
Good morning, Brett Davy, General Manager, Planning and Regulatory Services.
Thank you very much. Mr Davy, would you mind outlining for us what's the purpose of the regional plan in regards to state planning, legislation, regulations and planning?
Of course. So the regional plan is part of the hierarchy of planning instruments that we operate within. So the planning legislation is the highest of that hierarchy. And then under the planning legislation, there's regional plans as well as state planning policies, like the regional plan on the matter, the subject today, and below those are the likes of planning schemes. So regional plans affect a broader area, multiple local governments, and the idea of a regional plan is to communicate the state's policy intent that then is translated into planning schemes. So subject to the regional plan being finalised, it might require changes to local planning schemes across SEQ.
Do you want to explain to us, but also for our residents too, how the local government works with the state government and how obviously councils follow the planning laws, but we also have some ability to mould things as well?
Correct. So the translation of planning law from legislation, including the Planning Act and regulations, as well as the things like the regional plan and state planning policy, some of those are ultimately up to the council to implement. And those elements come into the planning scheme and policies with the planning scheme to deal with density where development occurs and those sorts of things. There's some matters that we can control in a local planning scheme, but there's some matters that we can't. And they are the matters that the state regulate in a way that say, local government must do this. With the regional plan, as it's drafted, one of the core functions is a focus on the supply of jobs and the supply of housing, as well as obviously a good framework of our cities. So housing is a big focus of the current draft shaping SEQ.
One thing that struck me, being involved in this, is that we look, the plan looks at just the housing and there's nothing there from a budget perspective on infrastructure. Can you explain why the state do not put any money towards infrastructure? There's no commitment, yet councils are being asked to make a commitment for housing.
Correct. So the previous regional plans have included in part some infrastructure planning, but as a collective plan, it hasn't been budgeted, so to speak. Obviously, the state have budgets that run through delivery of road networks for the state level highways, transport networks. But there isn't necessarily a clear connection between that and regional planning. So this draft regional plan includes an infrastructure supplement, and the infrastructure supplement outlines the type of state infrastructure that's needed to accommodate growth. But again, that's not specifically budgeted. It's certainly an advancement that's required.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of Mr Davy? Okay, thank you, Mr Davy.
Thanks.
I note that there have been some amendments put forward by Mr Davy, I think some that have been emailed out to you. And it's got here that's requested that item four was resolved on a delegation, so the submission can be sent to the state. And it says that attachment two of this report requires an amendment as outlined by the general manager of planning regulatory services in an email sent to us on the 10th of October with the addition of one word as follows on the page, so including the word not. So that sentence there is, council therefore does not require additional ever footprint. Not sure how you're accommodating that, do you think? Yes, it needs to be, I assume, CEO, put in there? So I'll move a recommendation A, B, C and D. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. We'll go into discussion. From my perspective, I concur with the officer recommendations and the comments in relation to this item. While there's no doubt that South East Queensland is in the grips of a housing crisis, the SEQ region plan is a long-term planning tool and generally not one you would use to address immediate need for housing. I therefore share the concerns of officers that this review has been rushed, both in the provision of important information need by councils to effectively engage in this process, but also in the engagement with our community. Of most concern to me, and a concern shared by the mayors of South East Queensland, is the significant lack of transport infrastructure needed to adequately support this growth, particularly in our fastest growing suburbs such as Ripley and Red Bank Plains. Ipswich is and has been for some time, certainly for over a decade, the fastest growing council area in Queensland. Yet across the past decade and more, we have received some of the lowest investment in road and transport funding from the Queensland Government compared to our fellow SEQ councils. When compared to all Queensland councils, Ipswich doesn't fare much better. Ipswich is the sixth largest council in Queensland by population, but currently ranks 58th when it comes to transport investment per capita. I think council and the community understands that South East Queensland is growing and Ipswich has a role to play in accommodating that growth, but so does the state. And to date, they have not upheld their end of the agreement. And I do commend people to read attachment one, which does give councils' response into the questions that are being asked, the housing supply statement. The state government have asked three questions of each council. One is where are the areas of primary concern achieving the dwelling supply targets and why? And obviously councils have outlined the issues with the accelerated growth for the next 10 years and how we'll achieve that. Also talks about the fact that under social housing, the share of social housing stock in Ipswich is declining with less social housing stock available for rent in 2021 compared to what was available in 2016. Also talks about the fact that we observe at the moment that we deliver about 50 new dwellings a week. And this plan is asking us to deliver about 100 dwellings per week. But because we haven't been able to achieve those other ones, it's probably more likely to be about 130 dwellings a week. So we have to be really cognisant of what we're signing up for. And I also note under key issue two, the misalignment in infrastructure planning and delivery, and there's a very good paragraph in there talking about the pressure on local governments to deliver in these growth areas without the corresponding funding to deliver the key infrastructure there as well. I'll open up for other discussion. Okay, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. I'll now move on to item three. Item three is the development application recommendation, 13198/2022/CA combined application for development of 48/70 in 84 Pindari Drive and 67 to 103 Dancers Road, Thiguna for residential purposes. And the recommendation is that council approved development application is subject to the conditions and attachments. May I ask for the relevant council officer to come to the lectern, please?
Good morning, Mayor and councillors. Anthony Bowles, Acting Development Planning Manager.
Thank you, Mr Bowles. I note that we've had, I think, 36 properly made submissions and I think one in support, 35 against. And when I look at the list of the people there, they're all Ipswich residents, mostly around Thiguna, Wollene area, so they are local residents there. A lot of the, there were a lot of questions about the roads and the dirt roads. Do you mind explaining the conditions that council are proposing?
Yep, no problems at all. So yes, we do acknowledge that we're quite a lot of submissions relating to the public or the transport infrastructure, as well as flooding, in fact, a very long list of issues that are detailed in the report. With respect to the response to those submissions or those concerns, the proposal includes a large number of road upgrades in the local road network. The three major road upgrades that are largely external to the site is the upgrade of Gilroad, so all of Gilroad from the Carabin-Rosewood Road intersection, where there's also upgrades, up to the intersection of Pindari Drive. So the road is upgraded to a residential collector standard, which includes a footpath, cabin channel, those sorts of things, and will be constructed as part of stage one of the proposal, as proposed to be constructed as part of stage one. So that's the first major piece of road infrastructure upgrades. The Gilroad intersection is in a pretty poor state at the moment and probably a bit of concern for the residents, and that will be upgraded at the early stages, well, the first stage. The second requirement is an upgrade to Pindari Drive along the site frontage and up to the intersection with Tirana Avenue, also to a residential collector standard as part of stage six. So that is the main frontage of the site to the existing residential community. And then the final upgrade is a small upgrade to a section of Dancers Road to a rural collector standard. So not the same standard as a residential collector, there's lower volumes of traffic, but it's currently quite poor condition. So that goes from Tirana Avenue and, sorry, in that same stage, in stage 14, there's also an upgrade to Tirana Avenue into intersection. So the section of Dancers Road, I think, is only about 65 metres. It's not a huge section. So that is the final bit, sorry, not 65 metres, 350 metres, between Dancers Road and Pindari Drive. So fairly substantial amount of roadworks to be provided to the local road network as part of this development.
And there are a number of concerns and reasons. I do appreciate residents putting in properly made submissions, because I think they've raised a lot of issues, which has enabled council to set conditions. There was concern about the sequencing of the roads, that will they be done? Because there were some roads aren't going to be done to the later stages. So can you sort of?
That's right. And the way we've addressed that is bringing forward a lot of the construction requirements to Gilroad at stage one. So it's a substantial investment and amount of work to occur before, or at the same time as the first stages. So we're talking about 660 metres of road. So that will ideally address a lot of those concerns by providing an upgraded road that will accommodate the construction vehicles required for the rest of the development to occur without as much of a hazard or inconvenience if it was postponed to a later date. If the construction was occurring on the current state of Gilroad, that would not really be working well. That would be troublesome for the community because of the state of Gilroad. So that was a fairly sensible point to make, and we've addressed that by requiring that upgrade at the front.
The popular made submissions have also spoken a lot about flooding and stormwater flow. Do you mind outlining? Because I know there was different modelling used for different purposes, but that's, I think, a really important point for that.
Yes, absolutely. The area does flood, particularly this property. And the properties in the community surrounding or around this area also flood and have suffered different types of flooding over the years. So that is a completely reasonable concern to have. And really, the main focus of the assessment was one of the more challenging aspects of the proposal to, is that not on? Oh, sorry. Sorry, I'll talk closer to that. So that was definitely one of the more challenging aspects of the proposal to rectify, because it's a genuine issue. The way that that has been addressed is through a recreation of an ephemeral waterway through the site, which collects the sheet flow from the external catchment, reduces the rate of flow of the stormwater, and when it is discharged from the site, from the recreated waterway, reduces it to the point where it is increasing flows. In fact, it's improving the situation. So, sorry.
So is it similar to what happens in Ripley? Because I know Ripley has good planning provisions and our floods, but hasn't, last year, we didn't get flooding there.
Very similar. In fact, there is a very similar recreated waterway in the Ripley Town Centre, Echo Ripley section there, which is collecting from a larger catchment, includes detention basins and has vegetations been planted to create a more natural setting. So the waterway will be replanted. A bit ofly, it needs to be created first, then planted. So the vegetation will need to be established and it will need to grow and things like that before it comes similar to an existing creek, but it will happen and that's part of the maintenance regime that will be required in the conditions. But the detention system alongside the creek reduces the rate of flows. When there's a lot of, when there is a flood in a high volume event, it slows down the flow and reduces the level of flooding in surrounding properties. One of the side effects of that is that the water is slowed down. But what that means is that the water can be there for a longer period of time, but it doesn't get as high. So your houses will be less likely to be flooded, but there'll be water released over a longer period of time.
Page 55 of the report mentions that the proposed development will result in improvements to the extent of stormwater inundation experienced by downstream properties. Do you mind explaining how that works?
So that's what I'm referring to when I say the level of flooding, the height of the flooding will be reduced because the water is retained for a longer period of time. So what will happen is, or what is expected, or what has been certified by, will be certified by an engineer, is that the level of water will not reach the same level of height as if the development wasn't there.
Right.
But it will be, there will be water in an area for longer, but it'll be at a lower level. So it's a balance of outcomes. And generally speaking, people prefer to have their homes protected from flooding rather than have the issues that come with having the water around for a longer period of time.
So if council was to give initial approval, will it diminishes council's ability to have a say in the future development of this site? Or is it sort of done and dusted?
Once council, if council was to approve this proposal, the conditions and the approval will be in effect and we wouldn't be able to go back and make changes. Really, it is the applicant that has the ability to make changes. So they are able to make a request for changes to the conditions immediately after the decision is made or make changes or take the matter to the appeal court if they aren't unsatisfied with the results of those negotiations. So council unfortunately isn't able to go in and make a change to the approval. So, which is why you will find that this is a very comprehensive report and a very comprehensive decision package to make sure we get it right the first time.
What are the potential costs to council for this development? We're seeing the impacts of development in Ripley, Red Bank Plains and those areas. But what is council on the hook for here?
Well, not a lot. A lot of these things are required by the developer to be constructed, so they're at the developer's cost. So really, more than anything, we're likely to receive income through the levying of infrastructure contributions. So that would be a major part of the proposal. Once lots are sealed or created, there's a payment to council for infrastructure contributions, and that is for council to spend on infrastructure. So the major source of funding for council infrastructure is through collective infrastructure contributions. We only receive it when development occurs, and it's a cycle that, when spent correctly, allows for further investments and further collection of contributions. So the cost to council, I don't really see there to be anything out of the usual. There's quite a lot of cost to the applicant to carry out this development because in addition to the road and park infrastructure, there is also requirements for sewer infrastructure, which aren't necessarily covered by our approval process. It's something we investigate and there's advice provided, but the applicant is required to extend the sewer to the development. And that is likely to be an expensive, expensive piece of infrastructure. Probably the closest thing that there is to a cost is that there is a local recreation park, which is proposed in the development, joining the recreated waterway. That won't necessarily be a big cost, but the cost of that park will be offset against the contributions that we would normally be collected. So we won't be paying for that directly, but it'll be offset.
A number of submissions talked about, and I'll just quote one here, the site contains a remnant koala colony and appeals no environment impact assessment. And I note that councils come back saying that the site is not mapped as included within a koala priority area or containing either core or locally defined koala habitat. In addition, they said the applicant's ecological report said they did not identify koalas within the site. So what happens in there? We have residents saying that they've seen koalas and then we have the applicant saying that they're unknown. What happens in this situation, not just with koalas, but other wildlife?
Yes. The property was cleared at some point, was pastures. So there's a large amount of vegetation cleared at some point for grazing purposes. And what has occurred is that there is regrowth of vegetation over time. And some of that vegetation has regrown or bounced back stronger than others. And it does at times provide habitat for koalas and other wildlife. The way that that is addressed is through the mapping of the koala habitat and the other regulated vegetation mapping. And at a gross level, the, when creating documents like the SEQ regional plan or other state planning policies, the state government identifies locations that are best suitable for koala habitat and others that aren't as suitable. And that finds its way through those types of mapping. As this hasn't been identified, for example, as an area of potential habitat, which is another type of layer that we could Uh an area of um potential habitat, which is another um type of layer that we could have. So it isn't expected to be further um recovered or there shouldn't be um clearing so that we can um encourage the regrowth. It it isn't any of those mapping scenarios, so we, this is identified as urban development area, it's it's area for. Um in our planning scheme and in this S Q regional plan for urban development and the areas that are suitable for habitat are elsewhere in the locality. Um and part of that will be the recreated waterway, which will create habitat. Um in the most um suitable place where there is access to water as well. Um but it also provides a connection to other areas that are suitable for habitat preservation, which aren't actually far away from here. So this site is quite close to the edge of the um urban footprint, it is is really getting to the the edge of the. Um urban peri-urban boundary, um and it will eventually interface with habitat um. Um corridors, particularly with the recreated corridor, um and provide some function for um. Um species that will use that habitat, however, the site itself, a large amount of it is regrowth and being not protected. Um limits council's ability to um restrict its the um, you know, removal.
I I note too that um the two thousand and six issue planning scheme, which is the planning scheme in our current one. Um did plan for this growth, this urban growth here. Um and and obviously the the current S Q region plan also has this urban growth as well. So what legal imperative does that have on council?
Um it it makes a very strong case for the proposal in that the state planning. Policy or the state planning um, the regional plan, which identifies this as a growth corridor. Has been reflected accurately in our planning scheme through the um local growth management plan. Medially, that was done quite shortly after the regional plan and um and there was some consultation process about that. Um change to the um environment, um a bit early twenty years ago. Um and some parts of the community may um not have been in the community at that time or um, you know. I may not have been aware of it occurring, um and as a result of um that S Q regional plan identifying um. This area suitable for urban development and included in the um footprint and our planning scheme. Carrying out more fine-grained planning, which um has identified locations for schools and shopping centres. Um road upgrades and parks and things like that. Um there is a strong basis for an applicant to come in with a proposal such as this and provide the final fine um. Grain level of planning needed to make this site work, which is where we've come um together with the applicant. And negotiated the infrastructure that's going to be delivered, this is getting right down to the final. Um pieces of the puzzle that was started twenty years ago with the regional plan, which was identified it very openly. That this is suitable for urban development, but certainly didn't provide the level of um. Local planning needed to address all the concerns that have been raised in the submissions, which are all quite relevant and. Sensible things for us to consider, so um it's 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 a bit of a shock probably for a lot of people. To see this development occurring now when it's been in the planning phase for such a long time. Um and it's it's likely to be the first of more than one proposal of a of a similar nature. Um but I suppose the 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 point is that it is something that has been. Um imposed on us through the regional plan and then um adopted in the planning scheme as um part of the council's policy for growth management. It's one of our growth fronts that we've identified along with Ripley and Springfield um and and Red Bank Plains as well.
Thank you, I don't have any questions, uh anyone, does anyone else have, yes, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you Chair, uh good morning, Mr Bowles.
Morning.
Uh with regards to uh road infrastructure upgrades, uh this may touch on um the ecological uh aspects. It's well known that uh along uh pre-existing road reserves, there is a. Uh remnant as well as regrowth um vegetation and native vegetation. Has uh is the conditioning uh permitting or uh ensuring that um any of that um. There's been an assessment of that vegetation and if there's any measures to be able to retain that. And uh not just the the roadways, but also the areas where there are existing uh property boundaries, lot boundaries.
Um so th- there is some vegetation in the Pindare Drive Road Reserve. So that that road is um is currently either non-existent or just a dirt track that sort of weaves around the roads. Um some of that vegetation would be remnant vegetation, um the oh the details of which trees will need to go will. Probably come later down the track when we're doing detailed design. Um in, not in all cases are trees required to be removed because the road reserve is fairly wide. However, if the road reserve is also interfacing with property boundaries that need to gain access to the site or other infrastructure in the proposal. It's likely that some of that will be cleared, there is some vegetation in the road reserve that is adjoining existing properties closer to. The intersection of Dancers Road. Um again, it will come down to the detailed design of where precisely those trees are and what parts of the infrastructure are required to be constructed. Because the road construction itself doesn't fill out the entire road reserve. Um the the pavement is a set number of metres and then there's areas for infrastructure. If there's a scenario where um water sewer um power is required to go in the location of a tree, unfortunately. Um it it wouldn't be protected, there are general exemptions for um carrying out works in road reserves. Um that don't protect that type of vegetation, unfortunately.
So the um uh construction of underground services uh that you just described um would still have to uh take into account. The the existing uh remnant vegetation?
Potentially, um i- if it's able to be saved or it isn't, to be honest, really. If someone can avoid doing work that they don't have to do, they won't cut down the tree, but more likely than not, if the tree is. In the middle of the road reserve, it it will be removed. And if it is in the location of a service, it will also be removed, but if it is quite close to the edge and is outside the the space required for the infrastructure, which is. Exempt development under the act, um uh it may be saved, but it will be up to the detailed design to determine if that's appropriate.
And those detailed designs with regards to operational works perhaps will identify them at the time and there'll be an ecological uh survey done.
Well, there'll be um, there'll be a scenario where a spotter catcher will be available on site to um. Um determine if there's any habitat, um or or you know, koalas or any other creatures that need to be relocated. Um but it wouldn't be the same extent as a full ecological survey because of that vegetation. When ca- when cons- uh local authority or when someone acting on behalf of local authority is constructing. Local governed infrastructure in a road reserve, there there's quite a lot of exemptions to prevent um delays in that provision of infrastructure, so. Um limited protection for that vegetation in the road corridor, unfortunately.
That gives um some uh peace of mind, um the uh another item uh that the the chair um explored. Uh with is with regards to um addressing uh flooding and stormwater impacts. Uh so the conditions of conditioning uh under conditions thirteen, fourteen, twenty nine, thirty one. Uh to it says um, you know, basically. It that's to ensure that the proposed development related works do not have adverse impacts on downstream, adjoining or upstream. Properties, uh can I just ask you to explain in in layman's terms? Um how that will be achieved and specifically the the reference to that there will be. Uh slight improved um scenario from the current.
Yep, so the the main way that the outcome will be achieved is through the creation of detention systems and a recreated waterway. So a large amount of the water flows over the land um and is dispersed over a wide area. Um the proposal captures a lot of the upstream water and directs it into a detention system, which at the moment it doesn't do, it just sort of spreads over. So um that's when when we talk about upstream, downstream and adjoining. Um that capturing um and and directing to a system is preventing um uh upstream impact. So if it wasn't captured, for example, and there was just a retaining wall and the water hit the retaining wall, that would create flooding upstream. And that would be problematic and not acceptable, uh it'd also be while doing that, um creating adjoining property impacts. So this proposal, instead of um you know, just blocking it off or directing it elsewhere, captures it. And then directs it to a detention system where it is retained over a period of time, so that's predominantly how it deals with upstream. Downstream is is similar in that it's, once it's captured and directed and slowed down through um. The com- combination of um detention systems and the recreated waterway, which will have things like um scour protection. Um uh sort of weas, I guess, is probably the best way to describe it. Um once it's slowed down through that process, it also slows down the speed of inundation that would normally occur. So um in a high rainfall event, that water can sheet flow quite quickly into people's properties. Um and into their homes quite quickly and that's um that's a bad thing, uh most people would prefer the water to be outside of their property or around their property. Um what this does is uh this proposal does through the detention system is slow the speed of the water going through parts of the catchment. And because it slows down, um it isn't as likely to go into people's houses, it's more likely to um drip through. Through uh drip through the catchment at a slower rate um without having that impact of going into the property, but the water will be there a little bit longer. Uh because it still needs to move through and then it really what happens is it goes through other corridors until it lands in council property, which is set up as a drainage reserve. So this development alone isn't the solution to all the flooding problems in the area, but it doesn't make the most, it makes them better. And when included or when there are other developments that provide a similar arrangement, gradually the system improves. Um it also assists a bit with uh well, the proposal assists a bit with groundwater quality. Um so when the sewer is connected, other properties in the area will have the option to connect to the sewer. Which um reduces the onsite affluent um areas. Combined with the reduced um amount of groundwater going over those areas is an is an improvement of groundwater quality. So um there are a combination of factors that increase the um resilience of the area. Um when added, when there are other developments in the in the contributing catchment that also reduce the flows or the speed of flows. The flooding should gradually improve over time, to the point where it's very similar to an urban environment, similar to Ripley. Where we've um implemented sorts of these sorts of systems before, which um are designed to prevent um flood damage to homes.
So the uh s- stormwater design proposed by the applicant and the conditioning uh that we're uh proposing to uh impose. Uh will actually provide a very much a across the board an improvement on uh stormwater flows. Uh whether it be localized storm or a large extended rainfall event.
That's that's great, that that's um being certified by engineers other than myself, um so. I'm not that expert, but that's the advice that's been provided and that will be followed through um with further certification um in the operational works applications.
Yes, I've looking at the plans myself, I uh did uh view it as uh similar to some of the mitigation and um. Um uh rectification works we have done to other waterways across the city and it um it it appeared somewhat similar.
That's correct, it is similar.
Uh yeah, you did mention sewer, um so uh could I just define, you know, and I know that it's um with regards to. Urban utilities will be uh the um assessor and and particularly with the design of that. Uh the uh the sewer um corridor, uh where exactly uh would that be proposed to be located?
Um there is a um essentially a drainage reserve behind the properties on Gil Road, on the. Eastern side of Gil Road, so between the properties of Tyrone Avenue and um Gil Road, in the middle there is a drainage corridor. Um so the sewer will go through that area, um and then down to Carabin Rosewood Road.
Then through Banula Reserve?
Yes, that's the one, and then um through to Rosewood, um so it's it's a fairly substantial increase in. The pipe network in that area, um as there there isn't a pipe there, um and that's quite a long way to travel.
And that can be integrated into the uh parkland design?
Um it is, it, I mean, it's mostly in a drainage reserve, um so there the mostly stormwater. Infrastructure in that location rather than park, um the the sewer, once it reaches the development, spiders out into a much wider network. Um and is and is less likely to have that many interfaces with the um drainage corridor or the park network unless if it's required for. Um to achieve flows, so there'll probably be more likely to be a lot of that sewer infrastructure through some of the larger roads in the network. Um but it 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 shouldn't really interact directly with any of the parkland unless if it's required for a toilet or something like that.
Yes, those main corridors are normally located in waterways because the stuff that it carries runs downhill.
That's exactly right, and and it will be doing that.
Yeah, uh and just finally, if I may uh further uh just inquire with regards to. Uh vegetation and ecology, uh condition four, which covers uh the ecological assessment for related works. Uh you did state before um that as it's the development has progressed in the first stage. Um that the um. Operational works, applications and associated works um will be at that stage. Accompanied by appropriate ecological reports detailing how those impacts will be mitigated. Yeah, so we 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 won't be able to view that at this point in time, it's that will come.
The the lodgment will be occurring um at the water approval stage um for the operational work, so that will. At the moment, there is a service advice notice, which is in the the order of documentation is sort of a preliminary advice about whether it can be serviced. Um the water approval will probably be the next step before an operational works application, so that'll be submitted. Um between prob- most likely between now and the first operational work, so. We will be able to see it likely early in in the development process, but not right now.
Okay, and just finally, with with respect to uh planning applications and and development. Uh precedent is not really a thing and cannot be uh referred to, is my understanding. However, in terms of comparative to other uh developments, um may I ask your um qualified opinion as to. Overall, how the standard of this development will be in comparison to others in the past?
Uh I I'm quite um pleased with the work that our team has um carried out in making the assessment of this application. Um I'm quite pleased with the level of infrastructure that's been negotiated, um I think it's a higher standard than what we could. Potentially achieve in some cir- circumstances, it's come down to the great deal of effort put in by my planning officers to to achieve this outcome. The layout and the design is very consistent with a a lot of development that I um am proud of that has been delivered on the ground. Um a recreated waterway is always something that is a centerpiece of a development and is often. Um on paper, maybe not that impressive, but in ten years' time, once the maintenance periods have all been elapsed and the vegetation is regrown and there's. A recreation park that is well maintained right next to it, it's a really quality outcome, so. Um I'm optimistic about this proposal, probably more so than a lot of others, simply because of the um level of infrastructure that's going to be provided upfront. Uh I think it's a really good outcome.
Well, with my uh faith placed firmly in your uh technical background, um I'll uh I'll take that with glee. Because there is no um precedent that that uh you can refer to in in assessing, but if if this. The standard of the outcome of this development uh raises the bar, that would be encouraging to other developments within the vicinity. Uh to achieve similar or better, would that be a fair assessment?
I I would like to think that, yes, I think that could be a possibility, certainly um there is will be an expectation set um by this development.
Thank you, Mr Bowles, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, other other questions, Mr Bowles?
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
So the recommendation before us, that's recommended from the council to approve the development, subject to the conditions and attachments, uh I will move that. Do I have a second after that, Deputy Mayor? Uh in moving this, I I look at, um as discussed earlier, South East Queensland is growing at a rapid rate. And there is immense pressure on councils to ensure there is adequate housing supply to meet this need, in fact, all levels of government need to step up to ensure that we. We do, and this this is looking at um three hundred and fifty nine lots in total over, I think, over over a ten year period or more. Ipswich has been identified by the Queensland government as a critical player in accommodating this growth and bringing a diverse range of housing to the market. Ipswichi council has an obligation under the two thousand and seventeen shaping S Q regional plan and also its two thousand and six planning scheme. Uh for this to become an urban growth area. I also note in speaking with council officers beforehand that um I think in that two thousand and six planning scheme, this was highlighted as a as a growth area. And two thousand and nine, the Ripley Valley PDA was then created by the state government, so I think a lot of growth has gone into Ripley Valley, so a lot of growth that was probably going to happen. Probably ten years ago, didn't happen, but it's now happening uh now in that area. I also know when I go through the records for the two thousand and six planning and and council, I think you were very much involved with this too, probably council. That there was extensive public consultation two thousand and three to two thousand and and five and I've sort of gone through. Uh media reports for, you know, what divisional councillors. And I've sort of gone through media reports for, you know, what divisional councillors said back then and certainly his objection to anything less than 400 square metres and things like that. So, but I do note that the former councillor went above and beyond with public consultation, including I think he said he did 700 mailouts to residents as well and so on. So I do note that there was that public consultation, the 2006 Planning Scheme. As a result, parts of Waluna Thiguna have been slated for urban growth since the Ipswich Planning Scheme was updated back in 2006. While this growth has been planned for Waluna Thiguna long before this council, it does not negate the genuine concerns that the residents have, have about this development. These primarily have been around the surrounding road network, the flooding, stormwater and environmental concerns. And I thank the 36 residents who took the time to put their concerns in writing and making properly made submissions. We've heard that in response to the concerns raised by residents that the application has either addressed all these concerns or be conditioned appropriately to do so. And I think the residents, I note that Mr. Bowles talked about the negotiation by council officers, which I do appreciate, but I think the backbone there was also the residents putting forward their views and their, I think, very practical and thoughtful issues and concerns, which allowed council to have that negotiation for those conditions. And I probably wouldn't have got those without those, without that feedback from the residents. Currently, we've seen the devastating effects of the housing crisis all around us. We simply do not have enough housing, housing of different types, sizes and affordability to accommodate the needs of our growing region. We are seeing increased homelessness on our streets. We're also seeing an increased demand for single-person dwellings, so we are looking for some of those smaller dwellings as well. It's my hope that this development will go some way in bringing more housing options to our city to start addressing this dire need. However, and I reiterate my comments from the previous item, if Ipswich and its residents are expected to accommodate growth, it should come with the trade-offs such as better public transport and highways, necessary upgrades of Ipswich Hospital, and investment in critical sporting and community infrastructure for better, for example. We do need that sustainable growth. To date, this has not happened. Ipswich and Ipswich from the state and federal governments, particularly for transport, fall as well short of similar councils across the state as we saw in our previous item. While I don't believe these are planning grounds on which to refuse this application, I certainly understand our community's frustration, and I'll be supporting this application. I'll open it for other discussion. Council Quinsman?
Thank you, Chair. I welcome to the meeting this morning the residents in the vicinity of this development, and thank you for your contribution through the, thank you. Thank you for your contribution through the public notification period. I recognise Wayne Offa in particular for his efforts to keep residents informed. I believe that this development can be approved with the many conditions imposed on it, and I will be voting for it. These decisions remain difficult. We have recently welcomed the 250,000 resident to Ipswich, and this development will contribute to the needs for housing, which is of course not to deny that, that the developers have commercial interests as well. Council has an obligation to meet the needs for developable land and to encourage diversity in dwelling types. This development is part of an orderly process to allow development in areas that have been investigated and earmarked for development. I will address some of the concerns of the 36 submissions by pointing out some of the advantages of the development that will result from the conditions that have been imposed. There'll be groundwater quality improvements through the recreated waterway and the detention system, the road improvements that we've discussed, including the work on Gilroy Road, and improvements to the intersection with Carabin Rosewood Road, which will occur in stage one. Existing vegetation will be lost but will be replaced over the 10 years of the project. There will be an option for all residents to connect to reticulated sewer network. This will be by arrangement with urban utilities. And I must emphasise that ecological auditing will continue throughout the construction period. This development is three minutes by car from the railway station and 1.5 kilometres from the new development at 929 Carabin Road. If approved, that development will provide shops, medical services and fuel. This major neighbourhood centre will then give a point of focus in Thiguna, provide jobs and provide great convenience. That these two developments are being considered is itself an indication of the growth pressures. I accept that council's vision of a desired future may not always be the same as your own. However, given the conditions being imposed, I am voting for the recommendation.
Thank you, Council Quinsman. I open it for other discussion. If there's no other discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And it's unanimous and carried. Thank you. And I thank you very much to the residents for their very thoughtful and practical conditions, sorry, submissions, which allowed us to make do those conditions. I now move on to item five, which is the provisional projects approval. And we have recommendations of some great local projects. There are six projects being looked at. And the recommendation that council approve the provisional projects listed below to design and construction accordance with the capital investment in provisional projects policy. We have, I think, four projects in Division Two. One is the installation of pedestrian handrails at the existing pedestrian refuge located on the Springfield Lakes Boulevard. Item two is the extension of concrete footpath from the offset car park at Bruce Lane, leading to the Camira Friends and Neighbours Hall. The other one is the installation of a man-walk sign within Rebel Domain. And the other one is the contribution towards a fit-out of the mezzanine floor of the Springfield Central YMCA. We have two projects for Division Four, which is the installation of a dog bowl and associated plumbing at John Murphy Park and the installation of a community notice board at Carolay, located off Junction Road. Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officer any questions on these matters? No? In that case, I'll move these. Do I have a second for those? Thank you, Council John Ik. I'll open it up for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanting to highlight the number of provisional projects, I guess, that Division Two have. And happy to say that the handrails on Springfield Lakes Boulevard next to the Springfield Lakes State School are just going to help the children cross safely, and it's a more visual safety for the drivers that are aware that there's children crossing. The man-walk sign for the moment so that they can have more people catch up with them on their walks and their chats. The concrete footpath extension for the Camira Friends and Neighbours Hall is just basically helping the elderly residents there get to their cars safer. And the 50,000 for the mezzanine floor at the Springfield Central YMCA, it's hopefully going to open up a bigger space for the youth in our area. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Council John Ik and Council Tally. Council Quinsman?
Thank you, yes. The, the dog bowl may seem like a minor project, but I think it's really important and it's what people want, but it's also important in the weather that we're expecting. We've got to look after the dogs as well. And the sign at Carolay will contribute to their community information and their community togetherness, if you like, for want of a better word. Thank you.
Thank you. That's quite popular. The one at Pine Mountain's quite popular there, isn't it? Thank you. Any other discussion on those matters? Yes, Deputy Mayor?
The Chair, yes, the dog bowl at John Murphy Park is something, just a minor further embellishment that was requested by residents, users of that park. And Council Quinsman and I are quite proud with regards to the improvements that have occurred, that we've been able to negotiate, particularly through provisional projects. At John Murphy Park, the installation of the safety fencing, to ensure that when families with young children attending the park and utilizing the space, that there is peace of mind. Due to the Diamond Tina Boulevard traffic, as it carries downhill, sometimes at a higher rate than the speed limit, is a bit of a concern. But that associated works, including further plantings that occurred, has really uplifted and, and made that a much more beautiful and usable space for the residents. So feedback I have received is that these are just the little things that they, they wanted to make a difference, and it has actually done so. I greatly thank officers for their work with regards to discussing and designing these details and getting to the stage. And also the installation of the community notice board at Carolay. It is a, an item that the local communities like to use in their way. They're scattered across Division Four that I know of, Beatty Park at Brassel, of course. It's a great way to learn whose birthday it is that day and other, other events, celebratory events within the community that are coming up. The community really like to be able to have the use of those items. There's four scattered across Pine Mountain Estate as well. They're, they're very much utilised, so it's not an installation of a, of an asset that is put there and never used. Just to say that, see, it is very much used. And along with Council Quinsman, I'm, I'm very happy to be able to have the communication with the community so that we can identify what, what these projects are that they desire and to be able to work with council officers to be able to deliver.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item six, which is the public monuments memorial. We have an assessment of an application and the recommendation that memorial, as noted in the application, detailed attachment one, be approved by council. And I quote, a report concerning a public monument memorial application, which has been received by council from Mrs. Louise Cahill, the president of the Ipswich and District Trail Horse Riders Incorporated, proposing the installation of horse mounting blocks with a commemorative plaque in Harding's Paddock in Flinders-Gulman Conservation Estate to commemorate the 50th anniversary of the, of the organisation. And would anyone have, does anyone have any questions of the relevant council officer on this one? No? In that case, I will move this recommendation. Do I have a second? Thank you, Council Island. I'll leave it open for discussion. No discussion? I just think the application's done well. I think they've taken on the, the cost of this and the maintaining of this, and it's a terrific achievement, the 50th anniversary of the Ipswich and District Trail Ride, Trail Horse Riders Incorporated. Great to see. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We're now over to item seven, which is the Asset and Infrastructure Services Department Capital Delivery Report for August 2023. Does anyone have any questions for the relevant council officer? No? In that case, I will move this report. Do I have a second at all? Thank you, Council Island. Any discussion? Yes, myself, I just refer our residents to the, the update report, which is attachment one. It's quite a thorough one with great pictures on things that have happened in the last month, and it's great to see, we, this is our, our council's largest capital works programme this year that we've ever delivered on. So it's great to see so much work happening around our city, including flood recovery works as well. If there's another discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I think it's unanimous and carried. Item eight is the exercise of delegation report. Does anyone have any questions of the relevant council officer? No? In that case, I will move this. Do I have a second? Thank you, Council Quinsman. Any discussion? No? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Item nine is the Planning and Environment Court Action Status Report. May I ask the relevant council officer to come to the lectern, please? It's your day for questions, Mr. Bowles.
It always is. Good morning. Ethan Bowles, acting development planning manager.
Thank you. I'm referring to item on the register 2003, which is Newgro versus Ipswich City Council. And this is obviously, I can see that there was a matter, is listed for review on the 26th of September. This is obviously one where, I know, part of the tender response where the Newgro were to investil their composting, and they came to us with it just wanting to be Gore-Tex, not a proper investiling, so that's, where is that at the moment?
So there was a review yesterday. What is occurring now is essentially the production of a consolidated list of issues, which is a document that assists the court in defining what further discussions will be about. So when council or any, any council creates a refusal, it'll have a set number of items. And some of those items can be negotiated or, or fall away or amalgamated, which is just really making it so that the, the, the progression of the appeal is focused so that there isn't, you know, a catch-all basket of, you know, every single issue. It's these issues and they're categorised or consolidated into specific points. So that, that sort of documentation sometimes is really quickly and easy to produce, but for something like Newgro, where there is a large array of issues and a large array of parts of different legislation that we need to make sure are covered, it has taken some time and we're in the process of continuing to finalise that document, but that is very close to being finalised. And that will be the beginning of further progression of the appeal. But the review was, yeah, just yesterday, so that was the most recent update.
Okay, thank you. I'm moving now on to item register 160, which is the Austin BMI matter.
Yes, so...
This was obviously, it's disappointing to see this is a deemed refusal because, because of a one week. We, we've requested a one week, I guess, extension back in February. But I can see that that was reviewed on the 27th of September. Where is that at now?
So we're still in the process of creating the draft conditions. They're actually due on Monday, so that will be, there'll be a much more substantial update in the next review, sorry, at the next... Curring is council, with assistance from its experts, is in the process of drafting conditions for the approval that was granted by the court. They will ultimately be shared on an open basis with the appellant, once they're finalised, and there'll be negotiation on that, so that's likely to occur in the coming weeks. So that's when we'll start to see finalisation of that matter. But that will probably take a little while longer, I'm afraid, but yes, our requirements are for next Monday.
Okay, thank you. I didn't have any other questions. Does anyone else have any other questions on this matter? Thank you, Mr. Bowles.
Thank you.
I'll move the recommendation that the Planning Environment Court Action Status Report be received and the contents noted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Island. Just going into discussion, and I, I highlight the fact with Newgro that we can only, council only has that authority on town planning matters, not on environmental authority and environmental compliance matters. But just reassuring residents that we are doing everything we can to ensure town planning compliance and ensuring that Newgro are complying with their town planning obligations. If there's no other discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I think it's unanimous and carried. I actually moved that we have an adjournment. The next one's quite a, a big matter. So I asked that we, I moved that we adjourn till 10.30, and I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. I think it's unanimous and carried, and I'll see you back at 10.30. Thank you.
Thank you, it's 10:33 and welcome back to the Growth Infrastructure Waste Committee meeting. We're up to item number 10, which is the Subregion Waste Alliance MRF, Material Recovery Facility Investment Decision. And the recommendations are that the recommendation contained in the confidential attachment one be adopted and due to the confidential nature of the recommendations, that once adopted by council, the recommendations be made public. Noting that there's a lot of tender valuation and confidential documentation, I'm actually proposing that we move into closed session so we can ask questions. So I move that in a court section at two five four J three G of the local government regulations of 2012. The meeting will be moved to closed session to discuss item 10, titled Subregion Waste Alliance MRF Investment Decision. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Councilwoman Consuman. I'll put that to the vote, those in favour. I think it's unanimous and carried. It's 10:43 AM and we've back into open session after going into a closed session to discuss this matter. So thank you very much for all the involved in that discussion. In moving this recommendation, I'm just going to amend it slightly, so A, that the recommendation containing confidential attachment one, if I could actually add, as amended, be adopted. if I could actually add, as amended, be adopted. And just change the beginning of B to be owing to the confidential nature. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Council Consulman. I'll open it up for any discussion. Discussion. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. And now move on to notices of motion, and there are none, or there are no matters arising. I know the next meeting would be at, what's 10:44 now, so 10:54. And close the meeting at 10:44. Thank you.